Is it working?
Yes.
Yes. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bedford Planning Board to order. The first item on our agenda tonight is to consider an amendment to a site plan application in connection with the issuance of a special use permit as granted by the Town of Bedford Zoning Board of Appeals for a church or other place of worship per Town Code number 125-83. The owner applicant is Abad of Bedford. And I assume there is someone here to speak for the applicant.
Good evening, Chair. My name is Rick Bolander, the project engineer with KSCJ Consulting. I don't know if you want me to get into the whole history of the project, or we just kind of want to focus this on the-
I think just on the part that we're amending tonight.
You got it. So, you know, a turf field was installed in the back portion of the yard area where the children play. There was a problem just with growing grass and mud and whatnot. So, the rabbi, whom I'm actually joined by tonight, Rabbi Wolf, decided to install the turf. It was done without a permit. So now we're going through the whole process of rectifying that. Also, as part of that, playground equipment was installed, again, without a permit. So now we're going through the whole process of rectifying that. I have on the plan the area where the turf was installed, along with the playground equipment, with pictures associated to, just to give you, you know, a good idea of what was installed. So now we're just going through that process of getting that approved.
So, the the level of equipment in this playground is not extensive. It doesn't really seem to me to look like much more, with the possible exception of the slide, which looks rather fun. The the equipment is what you see in an awful lot of neighborhoods.
In these type of, yeah, it's just, you know, a couple swing sets, kind of like a hut, kind of made out of wood for the, you know, the kids to spend some time in, and really kind of low impact, really not stuff we would consider impervious surfaces to necessitate any stormwater mitigation.
And I believe the town engineer has looked at the issues of whether the extra the turf, which is a pervious surface, if I understand it correctly, creates any problems, and the answer is it does not. I've also been reminded that the town's own rec department has done the same thing in at least one of the parks to avoid extra erosion and that kind of thing. Are there any questions from members of the board? We did have one letter from a concerned neighbor. The concerns were primarily with the fact that this was near the septic system, and there had been issues with it. But it was my understanding with what I've read that the Board of Health has looked carefully at all of the issues. Do we have anything in writing from the Board of Health?
I know, I believe as part of, you know, because we submitted zoning, wetlands, and planning, there was a plan that we put together under the guidance of the Health Department. We did additional soils testing, have that drawing approved. And if you don't have that on record, I'll send that over to moment.
Do-
From the Department of Health, on August 26th, they issued that.
Okay, and there has been soils testing, too?
Yes, we did additional soils testing, and they determined that we would kind of designate additional area for the expansion area if we were ever to use that. So, we have a standard signed plan, and they're on board, they've okayed this.
Yeah, I think that that makes sense. I'll ask the rest. That actually, the only time pesticides came up was, and it was a good argument, that the that they wanted to avoid using fertilizer and pesticides.
And what turf contributes to. But, no, I thought there, okay, I thought there was an issue with soil test showing a legacy pesticide.
Environmental, yeah, for the town. They were before wetlands, there had been some disturbance of the buffer, but wetlands has cleared them with a permit with extensive conditions which were in the packet.
And I think most of those conditions, we would make conditions of our approval as well. I'm satisfied with the Health Department issues. I understand why people are concerned. The technical overseeing of that is really out of our jurisdiction and in the Health Department's jurisdiction. But I think it behooves us to make sure that they've done their job, and I think we have. Any other comments, questions from members of the board? What is your pleasure? What is your pleasure tonight? Could I take that as a motion?
I move that we approve the site plan application with the conditions of the wetland board.
And I would also suggest recounting all of the conditions that had originally been part of the original approval, because this is an amendment to the original approval.
No objection to those conditions as well.
They are currently conducting a traffic study, which I think is completed, waiting for.
Correct.
There are some signs that need to be put up. There are a few conditions that were never met, but they're going for a final CO. So, yes, I think they should be restated as conditions.
So, your motion is approval with all of those conditions? Are there any other conditions that should be added to it? I can't think of any others.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, because this is an amendment we don't, secret is taken care of. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? You have the site plan of approval? And now I'd like to turn this meeting over to my esteemed colleague from the Zoning Board of Appeals. We're having a bit of a joint meeting this this evening.
Thanks, Deirdre. Good evening. We have the site plan approval, or the site plan special permit for the operation of the Abad. So I'll leave it to you to start.
So, yes, so the special permit use will be for the playground equipment that we described previously, you know, a couple swing sets, a slide, and kind of a, call it a hut teepee kind of structure, installed in the backyard play area for the children. And there was also associated with that, you know, there was mulch put down just as a safety precaution to kind of soften the area for the kids.
Could you also add-
Correct. And as of, you know, a couple days ago, the rabbi expressed interest in installing kind of a, and correct me if I'm misspeaking, a privacy fence, kind of blocking off the yard area just adjacent to where the turf was installed.
So, back in the back of the property?
In the front of the property, to kind of, to close it off from 172.
Not as a privacy fence, as a safety fence, so then it's just going to be a slip rail. It's not giving any privacy, just so that kids can go out onto 172. So we're just going to put a slip rail fence with a four feet tall with a mesh, so that kids can't climb under, and low impact.
Four feet high?
Four feet high.
Yeah, that you can do.
It was on the property, you know?
Yes, okay, we had all the materials delivered today when you were there, yeah.
That you can do without, you can do, you don't need a special permit, you don't need a variance for that.
Got it.
Any discussion on the addition of the play equipment?
I have no issue.
I have no issue. In fact, the artificial turf we were talking about, it's pervious, so they didn't add to any pervious surface. And their overall project is below both building cover and a pervious surface, so that was a very good achievement.
Correct.
And I guess I'm just curious, too, with regard to, we have defined here a special permit. And so when we look at the, we had a bunch of traffic conditions there that were part of that. And in particular, there were requests for studies kind of post occupancy and utilization. We are kind of in this in-between world where we're still at a temporary CO instead of, we think we're largely using the facilities. So I guess part of the conversation with the board is when we look at how that was granted, and we talked to the applicant about that, where are we with those traffic conditions and concerns? And what do we anticipate timing? And then back to the board is, how do we want to hand that up when we talk about the TCO versus CO with regard to the building and the special permit and the time running on it? Because they're amending it here, and so it kind of renews that conversation a little bit around timing. So I'll let the applicant answer first.
Because it's out of Rick's purview. So, the traffic study that the site, the site plan and zoning conditions require from us, our traffic engineer conducted during the month of September with instruction from Kim Lehorn, which is the Town of Bedford's traffic consultant, and all the instructions of what exactly they wanted. And all that has been done and taken, and all that data is now being put together and will be submitted to the town, I was told, by the end, over the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
But it's all, all the counts have been done, and all, everything has been done.
Okay.
There is also the outstanding re-timing of the light on 172 to contact DOT. But these were in the zoning board resolution, and I would just recommend that you restate them prior to receiving final CO.
And the signs that I know you mentioned, all the signs on 172 and the signs on Saddle Street have all been put up. They were approved by the town, the ones in town of Bedford were approved back in 2022, and they're up on Saddle Street when you drive there. The ones on 172 are up between our facility and Saddle Street by the DOT.
Well, from my, gather, we're here, so we'll approve the make motion that we approve it as a special permit, or to add to their-
I think it's a public hearing, so we need to just have a public hearing. Just an amendment to a special permit, so.
Got you, I'm with you. Is there anyone on the Zoom call or in the audience here that wanted to speak on the application of the playground? Okay, hearing no one, can I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, public hearing's closed for zoning board purposes. I will then go ahead and suggest that we amend the special permit to include the playground equipment and area as shown in Plan Z1, October 1st, 2025.
In addition to the plan submitted, the applicant is placing a fence around, is solely around the turf area? Or will it be finished on-
No, no, it's actually on the, on the 172 side of the property, just along the trees that we planted along 172. So it's, I guess that's the
What I would ask is just, can you mark it on one of the set of the plans?
Yeah, it has been in the building application. So we filed a fence building application with the building department and marked it on there. If you'd like us to submit it to your board as well, so that you can have a visual of where that's going to be.
Yes, I think we need that for the-
Absolutely.
If you could do that and turn that into Kim, that would be great.
Absolutely, yep.
Granting of the special permit, the proposed use will serve a community need or convenience and will not adversely affect the public health, safety, or general welfare. The location, size of the use, and the nature, intensity of the operation involved in connection with the use, size of the site in relation to the use, and the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to use are such that the use will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the area in which it's located. The location, nature, and height of buildings, there are none of these. These are outdoor, the outdoor equipment that exists there now, it's rather minor. These are the ones that we're talking about. Any additional kind of equipment that would be brought in, you'd have to come back to us for approval. Operations in connection with the special use permit will not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibration, light, or other characteristics that might be the operation of any permitted use, not requiring a special use permit. Parking areas will be of adequate size, and you have all the parking area already in place. We would also request that, well, that's that, special, let's leave it at that.
The amended special permit needs to include the clarification with regard to TCO and CO and the timeline now of the amended special permit running, as well as kind of the submission on the traffic study. And it's, and there may need to be a follow-up, depending on the outcome of the traffic study results, which is me.
The original resolution is a little bit vague. It says the special permit begins either at TCO or CO, but technically, because the TCO expired and was reinstated by the town board, we now have two TCO possible dates, and then a third eventual CO date. And we just want to be clear what the inception of the special use permit is, so we know when the, we can agree when the expiration occurs.
Was it possible to, right here, right now, amend the permit based on this?
Yes.
And then ask, once the planning board gets this information, that I understand is returned in, is analyzed and determined, you know, how it's, how the operation has worked over the year or two-year period? And they will give us a result, a recommendation, and then-
And then we can base-
And based on that, we can base our approval on that. I don't know if you might make the issue to the final CO approval contingent on the traffic study, because that was supposed to occur after the final CO was issued anymore.
No, I think the question is, so on the, on, wait, what, so, on the, on the special use permit, the concern is the management of the traffic. That's why we were looking for the traffic study. That's why we were saying it was post occupancy and utilization, to really understand the impact. The question is, is where did that timeline start for it? And so you asked whether we could kind of modify that date based on the fact and we were not anticipating they were going to bring an amended application to us. What I could say is that we could have the amended special permit run from the time, I guess the gap here that I'm trying to understand is, we really need the traffic study to understand if there's something we need to look to in closer time proximity, or if the longer proximity works. So the five years was intended to make sure you were up and operational and get us into that traffic time periods. Part of what I'm looking at, Eric, is if they know the traffic study is coming in, I don't want to unnecessarily call them forward, but at the same time, I don't want us to issue a five-year special permit today to that result of that traffic permit. So-
Can I just throw in a little planning issue here?
Yeah.
I think it may make sense to make the date the TCO date, because the traffic study's been done. The idea of having it, the thing we were interested in was having things up and operational when the traffic study was done. So we don't want to do it too early, but I think- Right.
We coordinated to include Rosh Hashama in as one of the days in the traffic study, because we knew it was the heaviest traffic day of the year for Abad.
And where I come at, when I look, when we look at, when we look at a special use and the timing on the permit, and we ask the applicant to renew, we use a shorter period if we have concerns about impacts that need to be monitored and retested. And since I don't know the results of the initial traffic study, I don't know whether I need to say we need to revisit this in a two-year time period, or if we're looking at five years. The original, we had no sense of when we were going to be closing out the construction and the TCO when we first issued the permit, right? And we didn't want to make it too tight, that we wouldn't be in an occupied usable state when you were doing the traffic study. So- Correct, from, from though.
From which date is the question on the table.
And the TCO that was being asked is there are two TCOs.
Yeah.
And what I would posit is, in, when they originally contemplated it, we did not contemplate they would bring an amendment so soon. That would also then trigger part of the conversation about the timing of the special use permit, because essentially, an amended special permit can have a new timing associated with it. Doesn't have to rely on the old clock. So what I'm asking the board is trying to assess where we could revert and say it was the first TCO that issues and runs for five years. What I want to make sure that we're doing, and that, mind you, when was the first TCO issued?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, okay, so we put us in 27, which might be okay, because then it has time to look at the traffic and study, and it's tight. On the other hand, if the traffic study was more than sufficient, we would likely do it from a later date. So I leave it to, I put it to the board that way to think about. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna-
So we agree on the original TCO date?
The motions from the original TCO, that'll bring you back in 27. Presumably, the traffic study will show that everything's top of setting. If not, we will already be aware that we likely need to be modifications to address traffic when you come back to 27.
Right, or earlier.
Or earlier, or earlier.
Sure. If there's an issue with the traffic.
Yep.
So, with the section on the, on the special permit to, to wow the playground.
I'll make it.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Van Laagre?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Mr. McGillis?
Yes.
I just want to take a second to thank both the boards of coming together. I know that's an incredible luxury for us. So thank you all very much for making this happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we will leave it at the, from the first TCO, so 2027 would be the five year, end of the five years. Thanks.
Good.
Thank you.
Kind of us will age a bit, so.
Before, Deirdre, before you start, I think we need to call, finalize our, or just close our meeting.
Okay, go for it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're set for our next meeting in November.
Okay, and I would like to reopen the planning board meeting at this, at this time. The first item on our agenda for the second part of the meeting is a public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit for the conversion of a garage to a cottage is greater than 20, 20 feet in height pursuant to Town Code Article 3, Paragraph 120, Chapter 125-27D3 and 125-79.1. The owner applicant is Zachary and Elsie Halpern. The property is located at 23 Trudy Lane. Is there someone here to speak for the applicant?
Good evening. I'm Louis Contadino, the architect. I'm here with project architect Delmi Palencia, and my clients are in the audience as well for any questions. As you've stated, we're here for the special use. I believe we comply with most of the requirements regarding the square footage of the unit. We are within the parameters that you state, greater than, I believe, 400 square feet, less than 800 square feet. We are actually 680 square feet, which represents 23 and a half percent of the gross area of the existing dwelling. The height of the building was ready, was actually predicated on the existing conditions of the house. It's built in the mid-'70s. It's a shed roof configuration. The pitch is four and 12. And in order to sort of fit in and become a part of the existing structure, we prepared this rendering. The height of the building is really determined by the existing slope. It's really determined by the pitch of the existing building, which is four and 12, an eight-foot plate on the first floor, and then the four and 12 pitch, which unfortunately gives us to the midpoint, at the low point, 22 feet in change. At its worst-case scenario, we're at 29 and change, and at midpoint 25. And that's why we're here in front of you. From an architectural point of view, when we design the structure, this configuration here is actually the golden section. So I believe that's what gives it sort of the, what I believe to be a handsome appearance of the structure. The entire structure itself is basically a square. And then this centerpiece of glass is actually a square as well. So it's a square within a square, and the projection, which follows the theme of the existing house, is a golden section. So-
So now, this is for the, the part of the application that's the 20 feet. That's actually a special permit.
Yes.
Want to make it clear that's not a variance.
Yes.
That's why it's before us and not before the zoning board. You did need a variance, didn't you?
Yes, which we obtained.
And that was for the- And that was for the age?
Coverage.
Oh, the coverage?
Yes.
The coverage of the, the.
Coverage of the.
Building coverage?
Impervious, as well as building coverage.
Okay. Uh, so you didn't need one for the age of the building?
No.
No, okay. Okay, the, the reason the distinction between a variance and special permit is important is the special permit is still something you're allowed by right, providing it fits in. Whereas a variance is a variance from the law. Special permit is, is not a variance, you just need to have a good reason for, for doing it. Which I think you've done something rather attractive there, so.
Thank you.
I see it as a reasonable one, I will not speak for the other members of my board. So the only thing you needed a variance for was the, was the coverage, it wasn't something in relation to the.
Well, what, well, my, my clients unfortunately inherited the coverage calcul- uh, issue. There was a tennis court built back in the day. Uh, and that threw everything out of whack.
That's a familiar story.
Out of whack, it, it's whole thing. And actually, when we started, uh, adding onto the building so that we can have sort of the cottage, cottage that's slash accessory structure. Anything that we added, we cantilevered. So we didn't actually do any ground, any additional groundwork. So even though this is added on, the box that it rests on is the pre-existing foundation that's there today.
Okay, I'm a little bit confused by the, the technicalities here because if you add it on, then the square footage that makes up the cottage did not exist prior to the enactment of the code, which requires a variance.
Well, the variance of coverage, building coverage, no? Or is it different?
A different variance.
I don't know, well, we submitted the documents to the. Is it six, sixty-five, sixty-five?
But you've added square footage to it, or did you not add square footage to it?
We've added square, we added a hundred and, uh, what's the number? Watch, I think it's here. The cantilever, we added sixty square feet of actual structure and we added sixty-four square feet of deck. So this portion that you see that projects beyond the foundation here.
Yeah, the deck probably would not count.
It is, is the, is this, is fifty-eight point one seven square feet.
It's. It's a coverage variance.
Coverage.
So are you referencing the total floor area to be occupied by the cottage within the.
Accessory building must have been in existence prior to the adoption of the chapter, that's, that's what the chair is referencing.
Yeah.
So if you've increased the floor area of the cottage, I think we're saying you, you need a variance for that, for having increased the floor area of the cottage.
Isn't, isn't this the, the variance that we obtained several weeks ago?
Coverage would be different from floor area, that's, that's where I think we, we might have a.
Well, one is covering the amount of space that is taken up over the physical external land, the other, right, the other one.
So I'd like to, I don't know if we have a copy of what they granted or.
The second level existed, what he's doing is he's ripping the top off.
But he's expanding the size of the upper level.
I mean, he said it's got sixty.
He is going from the cantilever, but that's his exterior and that shouldn't count.
The, right, that's the.
Well, no, he said that part of it was the deck and sixty feet of it was interior, it was the cantilever. I admit the deck shouldn't count.
This is the present configuration. So in order to obtain the space that we needed, we bumped this out fifty-eight point one seven square feet. And then for biophilic principles, we added the, uh, outdoor deck area.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
And so this is what I've added to the structure. And again, in keeping with the, the, the theme of the building that has these project, uh, cantilevered.
And what I'm, what I'm wondering is whether.
It must have been the floor, it must have been, of course, you have the authority to reduce the coverage requirements in conjunction with.
Actually, we'll by a third, that's why we do.
So.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to send them back to the zoning board if they've already got the variance for.
I don't want to go either.
But.
I think it could be contingent, you could contingent upon confirming that that variance was issued and if it's required to be issued, then they'll have to go back. But if it's been issued, then we, you know, I think you're okay. The problem is we don't know the, uh, whether it's been issued at this point, so. But I'd be comfortable with you granting it if you're.
A conditional.
Do that, subject to getting that variance for the, for the floor area if it hasn't been granted already, so.
How does that sound to?
I think, I, I'm almost sure it was, but I don't have it in front of me, so.
I, I thought I had read that there was the, an, an age variance granted as well, that's.
Right, he was definitely there and it, it wouldn't make sense if it was a coverage of a one, so.
Okay, I, I'm comfortable with making it a condition of the.
Any other conditions that we?
If we were to, to do this, are there any other conditions? I, I don't think I see any, oh, wait a minute, this is a public hearing. Um, we're, we're definitely getting, getting ahead of ourselves. Are there any questions or comments from members of the audience? Or anyone on the Zoom? If you're, if you're on the, the Zoom and you don't know how to raise your, your hand, you can just shout out that you want to say something. Doesn't seem, don't seem to be any comments. Okay, uh, could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, the public hearing is closed. Um, no, don't, don't go, we've just closed the public hearing. If we were to grant this today, the, the only condition I think would be that, that, um, we need to confirm that the variance for the floor area has been granted.
Right, and otherwise it will be granted before the approval is satisfied.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that part works, listener.
What, what was the last?
Well, if it.
I, that, I said that, um.
The question is, would they have to come back to us after?
No, no, it would just be conditioned upon getting that variance if it hasn't been issued yet.
Okay.
That's, that's all I was saying, but you said it more articulate. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, uh, is there? Oh, wait a minute, this is a, it's also a type two under secret. Uh, so.
I move that we find it's a type two action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is it? There's a resolution and a second that it's a type two action under secret, all in favor? All opposed, back to the original resolution on the floor, is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, now you have it. You can say thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is also to consider an application for a special use permit for the conversion of a garage to a cottage pursuant to town code article eight, one twenty-five dash seventy-nine point one. Uh, the owner applicant is John Perks Trust and the address is one sixty-one Croton Lake Road in Katona.
Hello.
My name's Doug McMillan, I'm the architect for the project. Uh, what we have is one sixty-one Croton Lake Road. It's a large piece of property, it's seventeen acres. Uh, the existing house is here, existing tennis courts, and there's an existing cottage that is over the square footage allowable, uh, sixteen hundred square feet counting garage and everything. We have our variance for that. We conform to everything else as far as impervious coverage, building coverage, height and everything else. We are not increasing, we're not asking for any increase, any exterior changes to the building. Uh, essentially, alls we want to do. This is the existing building, it's a stone and stucco building. Uh, on the first floor, there's a run of kitchen cabinets, we just want to put a range in there. Renovate this bathroom, it's an existing bathroom with toilet, sink and shower, we're just going to renovate it. Upstairs, it's just one big open space and we're going to build a wall with a door and make it into two bedrooms, that's it. Uh, other than that, no physical change on the outside of the building. We just needed the variance for the square footage, which we've obtained, everything else we conform to. And this is not, this is Croton Lake Road here. You, you really, you can't see this from the road, you've, I don't think, maybe this neighbor has a little bit of a view of it, but other than that, you know, because it is a large piece of property, you'd never know this is here.
Now, when was this building built?
Uh, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, two thousand eighteen, nineteen.
Did you get a variance also for the age of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. I was very worried there, this, this is a somewhat, uh, controversial part of, of the code, but this is the way the code stands now. Is that if, the, if the building was built af- after the passage of the ordinance.
Ordinance, understand.
You can't do it.
Yeah.
But you got the variance, so it's okay, you don't have to talk about that. This is a public hearing, are there any questions or comments from members of the audience? Any, any, for anybody on the Zoom? Sorry. Yeah, I don't think so, I, I really apologize, I'm trying to turn it off. Okay, somebody finally gave up. I really apologize for that, very unprofessional. Uh, so where were we? Oh, there, there's nobody on the Zoom unless somebody was trying to call me on my phone, in which case that didn't work. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing, given the lack of? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, we've closed the public hearing. Any questions from members of the board? This is.
Very straightforward, no external changes, purely internal.
Yeah, and variances from the, from the only things that were issued have been granted. I don't, can't think of any conditions that we need to provide for this one. Uh, it, it would be a type two action also under secret, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor of being a type two action under secret?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Again, I don't think that we, there are any conditions necessary, could I have a motion regarding the application itself?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, you now have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
The next item on our agenda is another public hearing to consider an application for a special use permit for the conversion of a barn to a cottage greater than twenty feet in height pursuant to town code article three, one twenty-five dash twenty-seven D three and one twenty-five dash seventy-nine point one. Uh, the owner applicant is the Cavi Trust and the address is four twenty-two Mount Holly Road in Katona. And I believe there's someone here to represent the applicant.
Correct, Madam Chairperson P. Daniel Hollis, Gettinger Waldinger, Monteleone Gishewin Hollis, one eighteen North Bedford Road, Mount Kisco, New York, for a Cavi Trust. With Sarah O'Shea from my office is here, as well as Matthew Geronda from Bibo Associates, uh, project engineer, and Glenn Tyser's our landscape architect. We are here for special permit and a variance deviation from the standard of the height. The height of our building is twenty feet, two and five eighth inches, so it's, we're de minimis, uh, to say the least. But my letter of, uh, September ninth set forth in detail our compliance with all the other conditions. Except for, for some area variances, which we do have to go to the zoning board for on November sixth. The ratio of the square footage, the cottage to the main house, the size of the, uh, cottage once, uh, and by the way, it's in an existing structure, if you, I'm sure you've all been there. There's a main residence and the, the, uh, barn or garage has been there since nineteen thirty-two. So it's well before the passage of the ordinance, so there's no problem there. We have the parking spaces, we have a no objection letter from the Department of Health with regard to the septic for a six-bedroom, uh, facility. We're reducing the number of bedrooms in the main house from six to four and taking those two bedrooms that were taken out of the main house, putting them into the cottage, which doesn't have any bedrooms. Uh, so all of the conditions we match up favorably, except for the ones I mentioned about the area variances. But we're so close to Mount Holly Road that their front yard, the yard variances that we need for the, a, a covered porch on the main residence. The cottage itself, because it's so close to the road, uh, and, uh, moving a generator, which we already have a variance for the generator at a different location, but so as to have the generator be a little more proximate to the cottage, we're moving it, uh, to the north. North. We have the site plan, if you'd like to take a look at that. Glenn has, uh, some mitigation that we've done in the wetlands. We had an, we have an administrative permit with regard to the wetlands permit.
Okay, so you don't need to, to get a full permit from wetlands, just the administrative?
It's in place.
Okay.
What we do need, any, uh, if we're to get an approval tonight, would have to be subject to the area variances that I set forth. I can set them forth and with specificity if you would like.
Uh, I would like to hear what, what the area variances are.
So we don't need a height variance from them because we're getting the height variance from you.
It's not a variance, it's a special permit.
Right.
I shouldn't instruct the lawyers.
And I believe the building inspector, uh, the building department has been out there, uh, as well. So the, the cottage can take, will contain twenty-three hundred and seventy-seven square feet, as opposed to the eight hundred permitted. Uh, but the building's already there, and nothing's being changed to the, uh, that barn building at all. Uh, the variance, the gross floor area, the relationship of the cottage to the main house exceeds the twenty-five percent. So we're there for that variance as well, it's already that way, so we haven't added to the footprint of the cottage. The barn in the cottage is forty feet from the front yard where seventy-five feet is required. As I mentioned, it's already, it's been there since nineteen thirty-two with no negative impact. Uh, the height, uh, we talked about, the front porch is fifty point five feet from Mount Holly Road instead of the same seventy-five. Um, and the, the last is an amendment of an existing variance that was variance eleven dash twenty-four three to permit the relocation of a generator to a location which would be fifty feet from the, uh, front boundary line where seventy-five feet is required. But it's tucked down behind, Mount Holly Road's a little above the property there and the generator will be tucked down, uh, behind the stone wall in the elevation, so there'll be further sound attenuation there by virtue of that.
So how do we, we've, we've got two things, one of which we can do tonight, the other which we really shouldn't. We can certainly give the special permit for the twenty-foot height, the over twenty-foot height of the building, uh, which is, which can be a separate special permit. That's a pretty substantial variance on the, the size of the building, though I'm a little bit concerned about tying the hands of the zoning board by gi- giving the apartment conditionally on, on the variance, we don't generally do that, we generally ask for, for it to go the way it did with the previous two applications where they get the variance first and then we give the permit, how, how does the rest of the board feel about it? I think we can legally probably do either, but our, our, our habit has been to let the zoning board have free rein on, on the size variances.
I would prefer to follow that route.
I, I agree.
I, I agree.
If they were to disapprove that variance, would, would any approval we give would be void, right?
Right.
So it's, it, you can look at that two ways. One is that if, therefore it doesn't make, I don't mean that it doesn't make any difference, but we've, we've harmed nothing by approving it. But on the other hand, I feel like we've put pressure on another board to make a particular decision. If it were a de minimis kind of variance, I wouldn't worry so much, but this is a substantial I, I get the consensus that we're kind of three or four to, to one on the.
And no, no, no objection to.
I think the, one, if I might chime in a little bit, the, the building's already there. We're not adding to it. This is not a cottage that where we're adding any dimensional.
No, that.
Aspect to it. And the risk is all on us. I mean, if the zoning board turns it down, because of whatever reason, for any of the variances requested, you know, the risk is 100% on us. So it would just be time and expense. We're November, we're on the agenda for November 6th. I don't know when your November planning board meeting is.
17th.
Pardon me?
17th.
You know, we'd have to come back here for the sole purpose of having a vote and something that you could make contingent on their getting. And I don't think it's any undue pressure on them, but they can, they can turn it down or, or say you have to reduce it. I mean, I, I, I like my chances because the building's already there and it's a great building. You know, I think it's really preserves, not the historic, but the, I think it's a type two building at, a tier two rather. I think we're preserving all of that by this plan and I, I think.
Which is all a very good argument for that board, but this is the wrong board to be making the argument to.
And I think it's a lovely building. I don't think you'll have any problems in front of the ZBA, but I don't think it's an onerous thing. We're concerned about the precedent.
Oh, I understand.
So with this, it'll, it'll be, it, it looks like it will be smooth sailing, but we want the zoning board to be able to make that decision. And you're coming back to us right afterwards. It's not like you're waiting months.
Understood. That's fine. I just.
Yeah.
So could I have a motion about the 20, 20 foot height?
Motion to approve.
Do we do it with the public hearing on that topic?
Public, public hearing?
Should we ask if there's anything on either?
Well, we only opened it as one public hearing. I'm not going to worry about that. Could I, I thought we'd close the public hearing, but I guess not. Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Well, did we, did we ask, did we ask for comments on this one?
Oh.
I don't know if we asked for comment, for public comment on that.
I don't think that's been done yet.
No.
I apologize. Oh, that's right, my phone went off there. Are there any comments from members of the audience? Any comments from members on the Zoom? Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So. All, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The public hearing is closed. It is a type two action under seeker again, I believe. Could I have a motion?
So moved. This is type two.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It is type two. In regard to the 20 foot height, this building has been there for a long time before any of those rules were made. And it is a very, very common for a barn to be substantially taller than that. It is a historic barn, apparently. I see no reason to not grant the special permit. All in favor? Oh, I, I, but I have a motion.
Motion to approve the height change.
See, these people told me to get through this meeting quickly tonight and I'm tripping over myself.
Second.
I have a motion in this second. I'd say any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? You've got that. I do not think that, well, is, do I have a motion in regard to the other item? I'm, that's, I'm leaning towards diverting. I just wanted, if there's anybody who disagrees and wants to give it a try. Okay, I think, I think that we'll wait until.
So we'll be on, on the 17th solely for a vote? If this all goes well at the zoning board?
Yes, because we did close the public hearing.
Have all the other professionals with me that night?
No.
Okay.
No.
That's fine. So Shay can cover it perhaps. Give me a night off. Thank you. I understand. I appreciate the effort.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your understanding. Okay, the next item on our agenda is also a public hearing. This is to consider an application for a two lot subdivision pursuant to town code 107. The owner applicant is Michael Messenger and the address is 1620 Washington Avenue.
Good evening. My name is Michael Messenger. I own 16-20 Washington Avenue. Brief history of this parcel. It was part of a subdivision that was done in 1925, which includes Lincoln and Washington Avenues as well as the south side of Greenwich Road. This was done before the current section block and lot numbers were established. They were established sometime after 1964. The, the person I bought the property from bought it in 64 as, it's actually four separate lots as one parcel on the original survey. Sometime after 1964, the section block lot numbers were changed and it was, it was named lots 33 and 34. And at some point, 33 and 34 were merged into 33. I had checked with Harold Girdlestone. He had looked at some records and found that he could confirm that it was administratively merged, but he could not, there's no, there's no letter from a prior owner. There's no written record other than in the tax rolls, it looks like it was merged. And sure enough, in the tax rolls, the, the current numbers go from 33 to 35. So what I would like to do is reestablish lot 34 as part of this, as, as this application.
Are there questions? Well, this is a public hearing, lest I forget again. Are there any questions from members of the audience? Any questions from anyone on the Zoom? Do you have a, a picture of the, the lot?
I get, well, I submitted it. Yes, I do have, I have.
But it's just, could we look at it as part of the public meeting?
Of course. How do I do that? Do I show it to the camera? Oh, oh, you have it on live.
Just making sure that we're human.
Oh. You're trying to pick out how many tires are on the?
Yeah.
Does it come up on the? Okay, there we go. My apologies. So existing lot on the left, there is a two story house on it. The close subdivision is on the right. The, well, that's pretty much it. It's a rectangle.
Now, what are the, the, the lines? Is, is that a wetland marking?
There's a, there is, the town map shows a wetland here that, the, the town map shows a wetland that's down here that's really in the park that the property backs up to Bedford Village Town Park in the, the part with, with the woods on it that's kind of behind the soccer field. The town map is like well over 40 years old and I think it probably needs an update because it's not really wet back there. Some years ago, they did a field drainage project on the playing fields and that actually did change the, the water table a bit. So it's not, I mean, it says it and it's there.
But right now then that puts the house completely in the wetland buffer, am I right?
Yes.
So have you talked to wetlands at all about?
Well, this is a preliminary hearing. I did it preliminarily, so I figured.
Okay.
Yeah, this is not a final, so. Yes, that would put the house.
So, so that would be a next step then?
Okay, fair enough. So they, I would go there next and then they would review it and come back?
Well, at least, you know, it's possible that there might be an administrative, that there might be an administrative approach. I don't think so for something like this, but it's possible, but you should consult with the wetlands.
Okay, fair enough.
Anything else? This isn't, is, this is an area that's in our aquifer protection zone. So have you looked into the, the septic requirements?
I have, I have verbal approval from the county health department. We did all the tests. They will not issue a final until I issue a final plat plan, which is part of the final submission, submission to this board. So I'm doing it in steps.
Now, have you spoken to the town about the town's special requirements for, at the aquifer protection zone?
Not specifically, no. Just, I started with the health department.
Okay, that's, the aquifer protection zone is the one zone in, in which the town's requirements are somewhat more stringent than the health departments. We don't do that many of these anymore because most of them were in Katona and that, and were covered by the area that's been sewed, but it still is an issue in, in Bedford Village. So.
Funny thing about Lincoln and Washington is that we have, there's the farm's water system and there's the village water system. And this is a little island of nothing, for, for whatever reason that is. But I, years ago, there was contamination in my well and the county tested it over the years and apparently they think it's no longer contaminated, but that, that's a state of fact.
It may be just fine. I'm just saying you should, as the next step, you should also consult with, with the town engineer, just to, to clarify that.
I had, I have talked to Kevin Wynn once or twice in the past, but not specifically for this, so.
Okay. I don't think there's anything else that I would recommend in next be before us for preliminary.
Okay, so I'll come back, I'll get, I'll talk to wetlands. Hopefully they'll administratively approve it and then I'll come back and, what are the next steps that they want to say?
You'll come back for a preliminary. We might entertain doing preliminary and final at the same time, depending on what the answers are to those questions.
Okay. And you need the plat, the plat plan is very expensive to do and that's why I've been pushing it, putting it off until I know exactly what I need to do. So do I, I need to have the plat plan?
To get final, you need to have, yeah. So if, if everything's very positive and, and there isn't likely to be anything carried over after you come from preliminary, we would consider the possibility of giving you preliminary and final to get together. But I would advise if, if there's any question about the septic or something, something like that, after you talk to them, you might want to wait.
Okay.
Although there are, it's not as if any of the things I've talked about would mean that you wouldn't be able to get a subdivision. It's just that it might be a more expensive proposition.
Understood. It's, it's been an open que, I'm trying to answer the question, is this possible? And so that all, that all helps me understand, find the answer to that question.
Okay. So I think we have closed the public hearing. We have not, actually, we shouldn't close the public. Yes, we can. Nobody, can I have a motion to close the public? I did ask for comments.
You did ask for comments.
Yeah.
Motion to close.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The public hearing is closed. We'll see you, we'll get you on an agenda as soon as we can, once you've talked to, to both wetlands and, and Kevin Wynn and settled those issues.
Great.
Good luck with it from there.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay. All right, next item on our agenda. I lost it on my computer. Yes.
That was public hearings.
The next one, actually, we're not technically done with public hearings. We have another technical public hearing to consider an application for re-subdivision of land and site plan pursuant to town code. Article four, section 107-27 and 107-28. Is that?
Did we pull that up? I thought we pulled that up. That's not on the printout again.
Yeah, it's not on the.
Oh, this, this is the, this is the agenda we were sent.
793 Bedford. Did we pull that off the agenda?
No. Oh, so originally, yeah, but I.
So that's.
This was the, this was the agenda that, that came in my mail.
Got it. So we're doing 777 Bedford Road.
Okay, let me, let me see.
793.
Okay. So this is just a new application and it is for 777 Bedford Road to consider a site plan application for the demolition of a bank and creation of a drive-through facility. It is, the owner applicant is DP 21 LLC and the property is located at 777 Bedford Road in Bedford Hills. So is there someone?
Good evening. Whitney Singleton, Jay Black and Pete Catazon on behalf of the applicant. I wish you would flip flop the applications. I could get out of here more quickly, but that's okay.
I tried, but they wouldn't let me.
This is all meat and potatoes as far as the engineering. So I'm just going to let Pete go right into it. There's no reason for me to blather on.
Hi, Peter Catazon with Catazon Engineering. So I have two computers here, so the presentation will be twice as long.
We could take one of them away from you.
So we're here to talk about the 777 project. It's the, the coal site. The project is approximately 8.8 acres in size and that includes a 90,000 square foot coals building and Vision World combined as 90,000 square feet and the, a former bank building, which is approximately 625 square feet in size. So what we plan to do is demo the bank building and, which is in this location and replace that with a Starbucks facility. So let me just back up one, one slide just for access. This is at Norm Avenue here on the north side. There is a. There is access to the site from Norm Avenue. Uh, there is access, uh, to the site from three 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 Bedford Road on the south side. Currently, there is a driveway, which is, um, an exit only. And that is, does not appear to be restricted turning movements, uh, to my, best of my recollection. So what we're proposing to do is, um, convert the existing exit only to a limited, uh, movement driveway. Cars could come in, uh, from Bedford Road, make a right in. Um, there's a queuing lane, which is approximately two hundred and seventy feet long from this location to that location. And that is, um, can accommodate approximately fourteen cars. In addition to that, there's this drive aisle, which we're calling overflow stacking, which could accommodate an additional eight cars. The ordering is here. There's a, a pre-menu and then the actual ordering menu. So the customers would place their order at this location, drive around to the pickup window. They could pick up here and they could exit either through three 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 through Norm or make a right turn out onto Bedford Road. Um, this does require, uh, a few variances for, one, the building coverage maximum permitted is twenty percent. The existing is twenty-three point nine percent. And with the Starbucks building, it's going to go up to twenty-four point three percent. The next is development coverage, which there's a slight improvement. The permitted is eighty percent. The existing is eighty-five point eight percent. And because of the additional green space along Bedford Road and, and throughout, that number will be reduced to eighty-four point six percent. Um, also, the rear yard, and I have to, this is historical, but, um, in this corner here, the rear yard requirement is thirty. And that dimension, again, this is a building we're not doing anything to. That dimension is twenty-five point six, but just for the sake of transparency and, um, thorough overview of the existing conditions, uh, that's where we are. So, um, that's the project in a nutshell.
Is it designed to be only a drive-through?
No, no.
Okay.
There are, uh, multiple parking spaces, um, in this area, in this small lot here. Uh, there are ADA spaces here. The front entrance will be somewhere along this wall, so there'll be access.
That's what I couldn't make out from these plans. Okay.
Excuse me?
I couldn't make that out from the plans. Okay, okay.
Yep.
Now, it does look like there'll be a lot, quite a lot of pedestrian crossings of the, the parking lot and the parking area. And this, there, there are two issues I, I see with this. One, one of them is in, is the parking across the front of the building. It is a, a bit, um, shielded with, with some green space, but the master, the, the town master plan, and I believe the new town master plan concurs in this, is fairly absolute about trying to put the parking behind the stores whenever possible on, on one seventeen. The idea was to try to break down that, that feeling that the whole of one seventeen is one giant parking lot. We have insisted on it in, in other cases. And when you combine the fact that the parking's right in, in front with the fact that it going right in front means that almost every pedestrian who uses the facility has to cross in front of cars, some of which are in a, in a parking area that's looks like the kind of parking area you might be able to put, build up some steam in. I'm not sure it's, I'm not sure the pedestrian safety is, is taken, is as clearly evident as it could be.
We can provide some type of, uh, traffic calming, uh, whether it's definitely a crosswalk, uh, but also maybe an ele, that crosswalk might be elevated, um, slightly. But also I just want to point out, the existing parking is, is right up against the property line here. We're talking about this corner, so even if we did move that parking to the other side, and I'll go through some constraints that we had about why we placed it, uh, in this configuration. You still have this large amount of parking that's still in the front yard against one seventeen. So, you know, we are pulling this parking forward, so we are trying to, uh, comply with the spirit of the master plan. There are a few constraints. These dotted circles are the, uh, the project is on septic. These dotted circles are really the, um, uh, the leaching fields. Uh, so, you know, we have our building right against that. Flipping the building, um, would mean that, right now you make this right in and let's say you make a right out, there's no conflicting traffic. If you flipped it, you would have the two lefts, uh, conflict, you know, uh, you'd have to drive by the exit to get through the, the lane. So we think this is a smoother circulation. Also, this just lined up with, if we could go back to this plan, if we're considering the entire site plan, we wanted to keep this, this existing lane clear. So if someone pulled in and decided, hey, I, I don't want to go to Starbucks after all, the line is too long. They could exit out this way without even entering the drive-through lane, which is, has its own escape, uh, lane on it. Um, so, you know, again, I think we are making this better. We can, again, add a crosswalk. Uh, we could add some landscaping there. But we feel that, you know, this is a, a pretty efficient layout. And lastly, I just want to point out that there's a tremendous grade difference from, uh, Bedford Road to this drive aisle. If, if anyone is familiar with the site, this looks like curbing. It's really like a foot and a half high retaining wall. So the further you move it down the hill, the more challenging it becomes to kind of get a, a level parking area there without cutting. And again, the problem with cutting is that there's a, uh, this is just one row of the, um, seepage pits. There are several rows here. So the problem with cutting is that we would be exposing those existing septic, uh, structures. So, you know, we, we hear your concern and happy to keep looking at it, but, uh.
Well, how about trying to do something with landscaping, something significant with landscaping and see what can, what you can do there. Possibly provide a bit more space because it doesn't look like that's really all that much of a buffer there. But if you could provide something more. Again, it's, it's, it's a difficult task to some extent that we've set for ourselves to, to try to make the area more attractive. I think we'd all be open to different ways of, of accomplishing the same goal. But we'd really like to get away from the sea of cars because it's my, most efficient approach to design on one seventeen.
Yeah, we can definitely look at doing something more substantial as far as landscaping and, and maybe some islands that break it up a bit.
Yeah, if you can lessen the park, even lessen the, the parking more, it's, it goes across the whole stretch of, of the lot.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think.
Yeah.
And again, native plants. I mean, weren't we thinking of trees by the roads, native trees?
Yeah.
By the road.
I mean, one of the hopes.
In addition to native plants, it's not just tree and grass, but some native plants, but some trees to have a tree-lined road down eventually.
That was another reason for wanting the parking removed from the front of the building.
I just want to point out, in addition to the topography of, of the site and the retaining wall and the traffic circulation making sense and the, uh, the septic on the site and trying to undo cow doors from eighty years ago or whatever it was, where there was nothing but parking lot all the way down to the site. The other, and to satisfy your board with regard to the greenscape, in addition to that, there's one other master that we're serving here. Uh, we are trying to provide you with everything that we can, but it's almost as though Starbucks has its own zoning as well. They have their, they have their corporate packaging, they have their, their circulation.
We've had this argument with, with Honda and, and the car dealers as well. And we tend to be really quite stubborn about it because this isn't their town, it's our town. And they're welcome here on one seventeen.
I understood, but.
But.
We're going to do everything that we can, but we're, we're trying to, you know, satisfy a lot of different parties here.
I know I've read of things where they've really accommodated other towns that have insisted on certain.
And there's some beautiful Starbucks throughout the country.
That's what I'm saying. They, they.
And this one, this one's quite attractive.
Can do, you know, much more than they might otherwise.
Yeah.
Okay.
This one may or may not be quite attractive, but they're buried in the middle of a parking lot, so most people won't see it. So that's a terrible waste.
Okay. I mean, we're, we're, we've had this discussion about trying to maximize everything we can do for the town, but at the same time, deal with the engineering, septic, topography and Starbucks, so.
To, to some extent, we're more likely to be sympathetic to the engineering and the topography than to the, it's a choice between whether we please Starbucks or we please Bedford.
Yeah.
We're.
There were concerns about the entrance coming in on one seventeen, the left turn if you're coming north, about whether, because there is a second curb cut on Norm Avenue that appears to have been there from when Chase Bank was implemented. And whether in fact that's a better way to enter for traffic because people are going to make that left turn whether we tell them not or not into Starbucks and what, what kind of congestion that's going to cause.
Yeah, that is something else we need to look at.
We will, again, this is our first meeting before this board, although we've had many conversations. Uh, to this point, I think we could give you a of frontage here with some native trees and as, as well as some native shrubs and, you know, um, kind of a layered effect where we have different colors during different times of, of year and, and, uh.
That might be helpful.
That would be great. And, and the other places that you have pictured green, if those are also landscaped in a similar, the look will be, we'll really break it up, especially if there are few islands. It won't be just.
Yeah, we have a lot of green space in this area as well, so we can really make this.
If there are things there that, that have impact towards the front, it'll help. And then maybe if you can fit in an island or something in the front.
Yeah, I think we, we can do that.
And think in terms of, of pedestrian safety as well. Because they seem to be anticipating, given the amount of parking there, that there will be a substantial pedestrian, um, usage.
There's enough walkers on that road, on that sidewalk too, that the sidewalk should be somehow tied into the site.
That's, that's actually a good point. That is becoming what, what used to be exclusively the, the home of the automobile is actually becoming something different and we'd like to encourage that.
It's almost like we planned that.
No, keep the secret.
So we, we hear you on, on the landscaping. We'll, we'll come back with something, uh, meaningful on that. Uh, the other thing that's not in this application and it, it may come after, but, um, the, the discussion I've had with the client is, um, upgrading the signage that's there. There's a, a small coal sign there now and, um, sort of, um, a uniform look with three 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 their sign. Uh, so we're pretty early in the discussions, but that's another thing that we, uh, discussed. And, uh, right now the sign is in kind of this, um, area. And it probably makes sense to move that sign to the corner of Norm. Uh, but again, you know, we're, we're still working on, on that aspect of it.
But again, it would be great if the sign had a Bedford look instead of a strip mall look.
The existing sign's not attractive.
No, I know that, but we're moving forward, so.
Thank you for putting that so kindly. It's really not attractive at all.
The discussion's really for making sure that you have proper circulation and wayfinding on the site. Because a lot of the stuff, you don't see the sign until you've passed the site.
Yep.
I presume you're also thinking about lighting for the, for the area.
Yes, we'll have some lighting. We could, uh, we could provide a photometric plan. Everything will be, to the greatest extent, we could, could accomplish everything pointing in, inward, uh, but.
Inward and downward.
Inward and downward, so there'll be dark sky compliant fixtures and, you know, shielded. So we'll provide a photometric plan for that.
And is there any thought to solar panels on any of the roofs?
Oh, good for us.
Complex.
I'll get back to you on that.
Yeah, the.
I, I know.
I think the building code now.
Does a good job with that.
They, uh, our, our client is very heavily into solar, so.
There may be trade-offs for additional solar if you can't put the cars behind things. Maybe you can put solar panels on top of them. The other possibility is, um, solar over parking lots.
That'll, will take away from the look of having it be landscaped. It's not a bad thing.
There are certain things I'd be willing to give it up for.
Just eight thousand panels per.
Yeah, no, it's, it is. This is one of the more cooperative property owners in town. We realize that. But we're always greedy. We can ask for a little bit more. When it's, when it's greedy for solar power, I think it's legitimate. Uh, I don't think there's anything else to do tonight. I suspect you may not be ready to sit down though, because we also have the next item on the agenda, which is.
Is, is there anything on this application, uh, with respect to seeker, like intent for lead agency, circulation?
Are we going to do, uh, coordinated review for this?
For the Starbucks?
Yeah.
Starbucks the only two, uh, involved agencies, or the CBA?
That's why I was wondering if, if it's really necessary to do a lead agency. I suppose we could declare our sales lead agency. Very often on, on things like this, we would simply do it.
It depends on how you want to do it. I mean, it's, uh, and then both boards would have to evaluate all the environmental impacts from the overall.
But on something like this, that's often what we do.
Really up to you how you would normally proceed, so.
We would, if, if we wanted to do coordinated review, we'd have to do the thirty day.
Yeah, you'd have to say that, yeah.
Well, so. I wish we had asked, um, Peter what he, but I know he won't be interested.
So the variances that we will be seeking from the zoning board of appeals are most likely, I don't want to, you know, guarantee you this. We have to confirm some things, but for the signage, for the building coverage, which is slightly increasing a percent, you know.
Well, it's decreasing from the current condition, but.
The development, development coverage is decreasing. The building coverage is increasing less than one percent, so I don't know that the zoning board is gonna.
Are you changing the building at all?
Yes.
We're taking it down.
Are you taking it down, building a new, okay.
Well, it doesn't hurt. I suppose it doesn't.
How large is the building?
So the existing building is about, just let me go back to my notes. The existing building is six hundred and twenty-five square feet. The Starbucks will be twenty-two hundred and forty-five square feet.
So if it's, if there is a, there is a type two construction or expansion of a primary or accessory per non-residential structure facility involving less than four thousand square feet of gross floor area, not involving a change in zoning or a use variance inconsistent with all land use controls. So I think it would fit within that.
It's actually a type two.
So it's a type two. If it's, if it's under four thousand square feet, I think we could fit it as a type two.
That, that makes a lot more sense to me, frankly. Could I have a motion?
Move there to type two.
Second.
On the basis of the building involving under four thousand square feet. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All in favor? All opposed? It is a type two action. So I think this, did you have anything else for us?
No, it's actually a good segue to the next application.
And the next application is, I've got too many pieces of paper now. Seven, seven ninety-three. And. Oh, Lord. Did I have your copy of that? It's to consider an application for the re-subdivision of land and site plan pursuant to town code article four, chapter one oh seven dash twenty-seven and one oh seven dash twenty-eight. The owner applicant is DP twenty-one LLC, and the address in this case is seven ninety-two.
So this, this is much less impactful than the last application. We are proposing no new building construction. We're simply trying to realign lots in such a fashion that, because of a zoning change at the village, that the town made a while back, everything is now in the same zoning district. It's all RB, and what we're proposing to do is to slightly decrease the Bedford portion of the three, three, three site, and slightly increase, what is it, seven ninety?
Yeah, let me just go through the, the lots. Seven ninety-three.
Can you, can you zoom in on that so they can see it better?
I think I can. Let's see. This is Adobe. We'll try to. Okay, here we go.
There you go. There you go.
Sure, I stopped refreshing.
Can you pull me here?
Yeah. Let me show it on, on this one.
I didn't bring a pointer on it.
It's okay. Okay. I was here. So there's, there's two lots here. This bottom lot is known as seven ninety-three. This other lot here is known as seven ninety-five Bedford Road. And in this portion here, which will be taken from three, 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 and incorporating it into this, into this lot, which we're gonna combine. So seven ninety-three, seven ninety-five will be combined. And then the subdivision involves taking, let me give you some square footages here. We're gonna be taking about sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight square feet from three, 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 and adding it to the seven ninety-three lot. And just for perspective, existing two lots combined is point nine acres, and it'll be one point two nine with the subdivision.
And the reason you're doing it?
Good question.
There is a good answer too.
It's almost like we don't have to do this presentation. The board just asks all the right questions. So this existing building will be repurposed for like a taco, some kind of food business. And the septic for this building is currently very small. We lost a part of this due to this realignment. So the purpose is so that we could have an expanded septic and reserve area to support the, the, the new use. We did preliminary soils testing probably a year ago, and we have an application into the health department to do official soils testing. So we're pretty sure what the soils are and what the perk rates we're gonna get. But now we just have to do it for real this time with the health department and with DEP.
So the, so the short answer to your question is, we're not developing that, we're simply adding on to it for septic capacity. That's it. We're taking the area from a former Mill Hill Excites. That's all dirt, hard dirt, making that a parking area, which I presume might lead us to the question of landscaping along North Bedford.
It might just.
But other than that, we're not, we're not proposing any building. We are proposing, I think this is actually an existing access system.
There's, there's a curb cut there now. So access will be from the existing curb cut. I, I think just looking at this, we'd like to maybe put some kind of triangular island, so it's right turn in, right turn out.
It's harder with the traffic circle.
It's, so it, everyone is directed to the traffic circle.
None of that attractive building that's there now would be completely repurposed and actually look attractive.
And maybe there'll be some trees in the parking lot?
There will be some trees in the parking lot.
Native. That, that's really the, the, the full breadth of this application. It's not too complicated, but it is necessary to be able to realistically utilize that, that building. And it, it does, it does not trigger any variances at all. It's just fully compliant, don't say anything. There is one component of this building that's pre-existing non-conforming that we can't change because we don't have control of it. There's a small portion of this building back here that does not need current setback from the gas station in front of it. But we're not expanding that, and there will be no increase in degree of non-conformity, but, but that is non-conforming in that one small location. You can actually see the dotted line where the setback should. So that's, that's the only thing in regard to that. And.
I think the only thing I wanted to add is, we do have, let's see. Let me just close this and open. From my flash drive. We do have an application for a subdivision before the Village of Mount Kisco. The purpose of that subdivision is.
You had it up before.
Yeah, it was, I'm not sure why it did.
Oh, is this the other small piece?
Yeah, it's a, it's a similar, it's a land swap between two, two parcels.
And is this part of the same application?
No, well, we, we had some discussions early on in this process as to, you'll recall when there was an, an application for three, 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 there was a fight over lead agency, which was awarded to Mount Kisco.
Yes.
Rather than go through that again, it was discussed with your planner and Mount Kisco's planner, and confirmed by, at least as far as recommendations of those, of, of those officials, that if, given the nature of what's going on, Mount Kisco's application is to swap this piece for this piece, and Bedford's was to add this. We thought it would be more appropriate that each town be its own lead agency. And I think there was concurrence on that, but we did set forth to both towns that anything, well, we have to by virtue of its proximity to a town line, but whatever, whatever goes on in Mount Kisco will be copied to your board. Whatever goes on in Bedford will be copied to the Mount Kisco planning board. But essentially, for, for purposes of just walking through it, this area right here is currently owned, is currently owned by the owner of this property, three eighty-three. And there's an easement to go across this parcel of land. What did you do?
Sorry.
This parcel of land right here is currently owned.
You think I'd be doing that on purpose?
It's currently owned by three, 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 but can't use this access for three, three, three because of the topographical.
Right.
That's where the safe white is and where the.
That's where Presto is, right?
Yeah, well.
Presto's down here.
This is the mattress store right here. This is the automotive in the back.
Right.
And this is retail shopping center. So the, the idea was to put this alleyway or, or, and parking, which is already built out in ownership with this.
The rear lot.
Oh, yeah, the front lot.
No, it just takes the land lock easement, becomes part of this back lot.
And this triangle, which is already access for the three, three, three site, it comes under the ownership of the three, three, three site. There's no proposed activity in either one of those areas.
It's all the same owner, just different.
Uh, no, the automotive, these two lots here is different ownership.
Okay.
So in terms of seeker, we each do our own, we're not gonna do a whole lead agency.
Well, we did, we did discuss with Mount Kisco, I did discuss with their land use attorney that there would be separate, two separate lead agencies for both applications since I, I, just to confirm, I think all the properties involving this application are within the town of Bedford and all the ones from the Mount Kisco are within Mount Kisco. You still may need to do lead agency here because I think you have Westchester County Department of Health that you're, you, would you need, are you gonna need approvals from Westchester County Department of Health on this?
Yes, for the, yes.
For the, for the re-subdivision.
For the recent, but just for, just for the septic.
I know, but I, I'm, that may qualify, you know, that may be an involved agency for that then. They may be considered an involved agency.
Couldn't we do uncoordinated review and they could do their own review?
Mount Kisco is totally separate, right? They're totally separate, but you would, I think you'd need to do lead agency for this. I mean, if we want to look into it further, but I think we have, since we have another agency that they require an approval from, you'd need to do lead agency on it. Typically, Westchester County doesn't do its own seeker review on these projects, so.
Well, in that case, that's one piece of work we can do that tonight then.
You could do the clear lead agency tonight, unless, unless you have an alternative theory as to why it's a type, why there's no other agencies involved, so, you know.
No, I understand that, but wouldn't it be an administrative action by the Board of Health and not a discretionary board?
That, that, that I don't know. I don't know if Westchester County is considered.
Like the historic.
The building inspector's not a, a, an involved agency, he's an involved official.
Right.
Even a historic preservation committee, even a historic preservation commission isn't an involved agency.
I, I, I've just never heard of the Board of Health being a.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, if that's okay with you.
But either, either, either way, there's, there's a process here, and if you want to declare.
Approve pending Board of Health approval.
Well, then, that we always do, but that's not, it's not seeker.
So if you don't typically, for typically for subdivision, you don't count the Westchester County Department of Health as a, as a involved agency?
Well, I mean, when we fill out part one, yeah, we, we usually put it down as an involved agency. But we, but we also put the, the Bedford Village Historic District Commission down, and, and they're definitely not.
Well, I would count them as a, as an involved agency that needs to get lead, that needs.
But they, but they're not, they're an administrative.
They're, they're.
I, I, I was just.
Discretionary. We don't, we can, we can talk about that another time, but that, that's the question. I don't know, actually, I don't know if the town ahead of Westchester County Department of Health is considered a discretionary.
I don't know about that one.
Or administrative. You can, so look, you could, you could decide not to declare lead agency, and if they feel it's necessary to do a full review, Westchester County Department of Health could do a review at that point, so.
And is this a type two or the?
No, 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 this, this is.
Subdivision is unless.
But this is, but I can't think of anything, to be honest, this small that we've ever done a declare lead agency.
I mean, I'd be okay, and then it's up to the county to do, to do its review, you know.
I think we do.
Well, yeah, nevertheless, because of its proximity to the municipal line, there's gonna have to be referral to the Westchester County Planning Agency.
Right, but that.
And we're gonna have to make an environmental determination.
No, I wasn't thinking we weren't going to make an environmental determination, but just that we do uncoordinated review.
The only question is whether you need to do lead agency circulation because of the department, because there's another involved agency here.
Why don't, why don't we defer on that and get an answer for your board before you make a decision?
Well, I just don't want to hold you up.
No, I understand, but you, but sometimes making a decision on, on something like this might be unnecessary and ultimately foul, foul things up. We're gonna have to do, we're gonna have to do the notices, and we're gonna have to notify Mount Kisco of this application. Just like Mount Kisco's gonna notify you of its application, and we're gonna have to go to the Westchester County referral, so.
I mean, I don't mind doing it, if, if the easiest thing is to do the, the, the thirty day.
Notice.
Notice, maybe we should just do it.
Okay, that's, that's fine with us.
I mean, I don't think you have anything to lose from that, and we'll, 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 we'll circulate it to Mount Kisco and to, just as an interested agency and Westchester County Department of Health, we can circulate it to, just out of an abundance of caution, so.
So could I have a motion that we circulate the statement that, that we intend to be lead agency?
So move.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We will circulate it.
Thank you. I, I know you've had a long meeting tonight, just not to belabor, but are you going to be looking for landscaping along here? Because this is a travel lane, and I'm just trying to figure out what, or we're gonna try to figure out what your board's desire is. We're obviously not gonna want to have hedges, you know, creeping into the, to the peel off lane.
If, if you can figure out a way to put even one tree, one street tree, it might be the most efficient.
Okay.
And some low perennials, I mean. And some low perennials, just so it's not more paved, that's all. But they're native perennials that take zero care.
Yeah. I think.
I think that's it. I know it's a lot of land, but I, I, I don't think it's a huge project.
No. Okay, are we, I think we've done everything we can do on this application.
Yep, thank you.
The next item on our agenda is to consider an extension request for a previously approved two lot subdivision. The owner applicant is Glen Arbor Golf Club LLC, and the address is two thirty-four Bedford Center Road. Is there anyone here to speak for the applicant?
Good evening. For the record, Stephen Rabel from McCullough Burger and Stout, on behalf of Glen Arbor Golf Club. As you stated, Madam Chair, we're here for a ninety day extension of our final plat approval. We're trying to work through some final issues pertaining to the well permit with Department of Health.
Think you'll be able to do them in, in the, think you'll be able to get, get it settled in ninety days?
I hope so. We're, as you know, DOH can be a little slow to respond, but they have our materials, and we're waiting for them to process. My understanding from our engineers that they won't sign the plat until the well's installed and brought online.
Okay. Well, you are entitled to another ninety day extension. Is the ninety day extension you want, correct?
A ninety day extension, correct.
Could I have a motion?
Just move a second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. You have a ninety day extension.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next item on our agenda is, uh, per town code one twenty five, one thirty three, review of the referral from the town board. For a proposed zoning petition and conceptual site plan for a mixed use development and request for the planning board to assume lead agency. For the purposes of conducting environmental review pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act.
Yep. Applicant.
Your thing just went out.
Can you hear it now? I can hear. The applicant is, uh, L L H P O Post Road LLC. The owner Alchemy Bedford Tenor Tenor Company, I think, yeah. And, um, is there someone here to speak for the applicant?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, Pete Daniel Hollis, Gettinger Waldinger, modeling own Gishewin Hollis, one eighteen North Bedford Road. Mount Kisco for the applicant with Sarah O'Shea, one of our attorneys, who's, uh, helping. Get her shoulder workout in tonight. Um, I'm going to make a contribution as an aside to an easel that will be. For all of us that come here, because if you forget your easel, you you you, uh, you have to do this.
We don't know what happened to.
On behalf of LHP Old Boats Road LLC, the subletcy on a one hundred and ninety nine year lease. As a result of a referral to your board from the town board on our petition to clear up some uncertainty in some circles. As to what the zoning is for the three point one four acre parcel that our client wishes to develop along the lines of the concept plant. Which I might add is is faithful to the recently adopted master plan. Uh, the confusion, uh, exists as a result of a, um, nineteen ninety four map. That does not include, uh, all of the three point one four acre in the NB zoning district. And two maps, one in, uh, two thousand and nine and another in two thousand and twenty three. That do include the pro, the entirety of the three point one four acre parcel in the NB district. So we've asked the town board to, uh, clear up that confusion by either ratifying or confirming. Not either the two thousand and nine or the two thousand and twenty three, uh, zoning map. Apply, uh, or if they think the two thousand and nine applies, which I can't imagine they would, but if they did. Uh, then we would have to have an amendment of the tax map to include the entirety of this parcel. This parcel's north and easterly boundaries. Are the same boundaries for the Bedford Village Water District, so it makes sense that that the the zoning tracked the water district. Because of the fact that we're going to have a, you know, sewage treatment facility on this property. Uh, we're we're going to have parking, there already is parking on this property, and we're going to update the, uh, the sewage treatment facility. So as to be able to handle the the sewage from the Bedford Central, uh, school, the elementary school, Bedford Village Elementary School. So we're here tonight, hopefully we've, with the help of your staff and yourself, um. Put together a pretty, uh, complete, uh, EAF and, uh, hopefully you'll be in a position tonight. To, uh, circulate a motion that be made to circulate that notice of intent to be lead agency. And we can be on your December eighth agenda to start going through that EAF in a thorough fashion.
That sounds like what we were intending to do tonight. Have you had a chance to go through the part one? That.
No.
I what I what I thought we'd do tonight is just quickly go through the part one that's been been given. Because we would circulate that with with the intent to declare a lead agency.
And by the way, David Sessions from K S S C J Consulting is on, uh, if any questions come up, uh, on the part one.
Okay, let me get up my. Copy of the part one. Does everybody have theirs? I had it all lined up at the beginning of this meeting. I think I've got it. Yeah, I've got it on my own. Got it. Okay. Um, I I'm not going to, I I don't think we, if we've all looked at it, we don't need to go through it line by line. I'll just ask you if you have any. Comments or questions on each page. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, any questions? Comments on page one? Everything seemed fine to me. Anything on page two? There's some discussion of the treatment of the comprehensive plan for this area. On page three. If staff has any comments to make as we go along, please feel, please do feel free to to, uh. Chime in, then goes for the town attorney as well. Page four. Again, this, uh, is. A proposal that will involve both residential and commercial uses, uh, so there will be. About thirty units. Of housing. There will be the wastewater treatment facility to go along with. The schools.
Will be an upgrade of that facility, yeah.
Page five. Page six. Am I going too fast? Sorry.
You know, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, no, I just like describe how the proposed action will affect the water, ruddy wetland excavation, fill placement, but we don't have any final.
We don't know how it's going to be.
Yeah.
I think that's part of what we're going to have to try to uncover in the course of the environmental review.
But how can we even review this if we don't know what's going to be built? We're reviewing the concept of something being built, but.
And all we have is a, you know, footprint.
Well, I think that becomes incumbent on us to ask for more than. Which I think is legitimate.
But this feels a little bit of carpet for the horse.
Yeah, it does. It I feel really, especially with this project in that place.
I mean, there's numbers, there's numbers in here that are quantifiable numbers, but we don't know what they're quantifiable.
Correct.
Attached to. It makes me very uncomfortable.
Based upon, pardon me, square footage, an estimated, um, utilization of the site. But as we progress along this path, we will have a more concrete, because our goal is obviously to not just clarify. The zoning map question, but also, uh, dual track a site plan for, uh, if in fact, the entirety of the property is in the NB's district. That a site plan that would be, uh, faithful to that district would be reviewed by your board for consideration.
Right, we we need to start the process and then it as as it develops, we could recirculate for lead agency at some, we could recirculate. Once the plan becomes more defined, if that's the case. But we need to start the process somewhere and because there's a subdivision application. And there's a proposed site plan that this is, this is the beginning of the process.
But I'm confused because wouldn't it make sense to first clarify irrespective of any proposed plan or not the zoning? And then if the zoning is clarified and it is allowable for such to be built, then a proposed project can come.
Right, the prop, the the issue is in order to do that evaluation, we have to also evaluate the proposed underlying project as well. Under secret, we can't, we can't separate them at this point. Um, that's, so we need to do some evaluation of the underlying proposed project at this point. That's the kind, that's the kind, we can't separate the two at this at this time.
Was there a point where they could have been separated before? You could have separated them before a project was presented or?
If there was no potential project that here we have enough of a defined project, I mean, unless we're going to do purposeful segmentation of the project.
No.
And that would not be, you know, that's something, you know, that the applicant doesn't want to proceed with at this point. We've discussed it, so to get to the point where we can actually evaluate the subdivision application, we have to evaluate the. The potential underlying development of the property, that that's what secret requires, so. And then, look, if if once we get to a point where we're doing a more defined, you know, if there's a, um, a determination on the, um, underlying zoning. That leads to further changes in the underlying project, that can be recirculated at that point. We can make amendments to our secret determination. But we have to go through this process.
Yeah, we we have to start the process. I there. There, there is, there has been a question out there about the, um. About the zoning, but. As far as I I can tell from what what I've heard, there really is no concrete evidence in either direction. And the general rule of thumb is is to.
Apply the more restrictive zoning.
Is apply the more restrictive zoning, so. Given the the two options, the one to. Look into clarifying the zoning, I'm not all sure it needs to be clarified, I think. Frankly, from what I've seen of of the information, I thi- I think it is clear that it, the lot was not originally. Zoned that way, but that's just one person's view. I think it makes more sense for us to to take the other alternative that the applicant has has offered, which is to. To consider whether a petition to rezone that area is appropriate, but in order to do that, given the existence of the. Of the proposal out there, I think we have to work on both of them together.
The two parts of the project, that that's the problem with secrets, you can't segment the the under, the underlying zone change from the underlying development. That's that's the issue. So we've, so what we had proposed with the applicant is to propose a, uh, concept site plan, which they've done. And we'll have to evaluate the the impacts from that proposed, the, uh, the proposed site plan that we have in place. And again, if that site plan changes, we're going to have to reevaluate under secret and potentially do an amended secret determination at that point.
The only way it's going to change, I'm sorry, no, the only way it's going to change during that process is is that it'll become more definitive.
Right.
That that's not going to be, you know, the same all the way through the process. We're going to have more, uh, fine tuning of the concept plan into an actual site plan as this process goes on.
Yeah, and I'm not so sure that it is. Less developed than much of what what we do start out with with larger projects.
Right.
It's not at all unusual for for a project to end up being very different at the end of the secret process than it ever was.
Very much so.
At the beginning. So I don't find myself. I don't find myself. Quite as challenged by. I think we have enough to make approximate. Guesses aren't the right word, but but approximations of traffic, if we're talking about X number of units of of housing. That leads to a certain number of of vehicle trips, regardless of where you exactly, where on the property you put those units.
Exactly, and and how many units of retail or or restaurant there would be. And we can do the septic numbers or the sewage numbers on that, uh, and and throw in, um, the fact that it's also, uh, going to be solving a problem. Uh, at the Bedford Central School District's elementary school down Court Road, uh, with this upgraded system, so. All of this, uh, I think to get the ball rolling, uh, I think we really need to have the notice of intent for lead agency. Circulated and.
And I don't really know how we've, what what is it we're looking at if we're not going to look at? At this. At the, at this conceptual site plan, what is it that we are looking at?
Right, you'd have to look at the concept of what the maximum development under that zoning would be.
Right.
Which would require you to to sort of do a concept, you know, almost a generic EIS at that point for this property, which here we have a specific. Site plan that that at least takes you down a certain path. If they decide to expand beyond what they're proposing with this, again, I'm, you know, we would do, we would have to do further, um, secret review. And potentially an amended secret determination at that point, so.
Yeah, I I don't think the the mass of the building, uh, the improvements is going to change dramatically. I don't think the mix between retail and, uh, residential is going to change, the commercial and and residential is going to change markedly. But the fine tuning of that is is where we, to get more precise numbers, but I think we can, as we go through this process, provide. Uh, certain, uh, information that will be helpful to you in forming your decisions with regard to, uh, uh, positive or negative declaration.
And and just to clarify that the environmental review we'd be doing now is is serving, um, as our review of the action of the zoning referral. But if there were other subsequent actions necessary to facilitate the development.
No, it's more, I I don't think that is what we're saying. I think we're saying that. We can't look at just the zoning because we're aware of the.
Yeah, yeah, but that it after that comes to pass, if there are further. If there's further review on our part necessary to facilitate the actual development, like a site plan approval. That would have its own environmental review.
Correct, there may be additional, you you may make an environmental determination and then issue your.
Right.
Um, determine, and then issue your recommendation to the town board on the zoning, the zone zoning board, I mean, to to the town board. The town board could then act on the zoning petition and it may come back to you to do further site plan review at that point. Or so would, I imagine it would come back to do further site.
But if it went that way, that's the way that would have to go, right? I mean, we don't want to, this is a, you know, critical spot. I mean, one of the master plans, uh, goals is to have expanded, uh, development and housing in the Hamlet areas. And and this is, you know, pointing in that direction and, uh, you know, we we want to be responsive and faithful to that plan. Uh, and we'll. We're at a stage where we have to do something to get the ball rolling, and that's what I'm trying to.
Yeah.
And at the same time, we we want to be. Be because the issues are so important to the town and, uh, and so controversial in their own way. We wanted to. Be thorough from the very beginning in the way we look at it, and I think. I'd I'd be worried of backing into a rezoning when I didn't really know what direction that rezoning was going to take us. I'm much more comfortable with there being a specific. Uh, even if it's a somewhat generic proposal that's riding on this.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I was just making the observation that. From the perspective of it reassuring us, you know, as to any concerns we have about the level of detail in front of us right now that.
We can, we can do as much.
More detail in a subsequent review.
I think maybe you and I were actually saying the same thing, and I was misreading what you were saying.
Okay.
So I apologize.
Not at all.
Pardon me. Are you any more comfortable? I I I don't, I don't feel a consensus yet about what we should go to.
So what is our goal at the end of this? Environmental review tonight?
Tonight, all all we would be doing is declaring our decision to lead agency. And we and we really couldn't.
And we come back to everything in this and review it to as we start getting information.
Right.
Okay, that I'm comfortable with.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, hi, it's Dave Sessions, if you if you don't mind, I just wanted to chime in. Yeah, this, tonight is is specifically just to circulate, hopefully to circulate the. The EAF, obviously for your intent to be lead agency, that the EAF can be modified during the process. Um, obviously, there there are a lot of involved agencies here, there's health department, there is Wetland Control Commission. And during the entire process, there there is, there are probably going to be changes to the site plan. Uh, additions, deletions, so on and so forth, so this is really just a mechanism to, as everybody said, to get the ball rolling. And we, I'm sure we will be revisiting the details of the EAF, uh, at subsequent meetings.
Yeah, no, we're just to declare ourselves lead agency, I'm really comfortable, but it's not just the agencies. It's the residents that that care so deeply about, which don't want this property not developed, that's not what I'm saying. But they want very much to be aware and have input, and I don't think that as many people as would be interested are aware of what's going.
No, the way, the only way they can become aware of what's going on is for us to start the process.
What we're doing today is starting this and decla- and all we're doing that is declaring ourselves lead agency, and we can go back over everything else that I'm very comfortable with.
Yeah, but I don't think it makes sense putting hairs over the exact numbers or anything on the document because it's-
Right. Because it's not real. We don't have a facade. We don't have, yeah, we don't have real numbers. We don't know what traffic's, that's all. So-
So, we can rubber stamp to start the thing?
I think before you go, before, before you go through the part two, you'll have to have a little more confidence about some of the numbers, right?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. But one of the reasons for going through part one and making sure is just, you have to make sure all the questions are answered.
It's fine as long as we can revisit them all.
Yeah. It's, but we need to send it out with the others because the involved agencies also need that same opportunity to go through the part one. So, our job isn't to, is just-
Do you clarify what we're doing tonight?
I just want to make sure, because I would like us to finish looking at the part one to make sure there isn't anything that we think is So, we were on page five when we stopped doing this. Anything on page six? Okay. Again, this is the, so we're at the end of the document. This is not our document. This is the applicant's document. When we, when we eventually do part two, it will be our document, and that is one we'll no doubt spend a good deal of time on and probably additional time on the part one as on the way to, to doing part two. So, is there enough information in part one to convince us that we are the proper lead agency? That's what I would look, look for in this. Uh, and it seems to me on the basis of this that, that it is clear that we are the best equipped to be the lead agency for this, this process, uh, and the best equipped to get the answers that need to be gotten in order to make a proper review of a project of this magnitude. So, I would like-
A move that we declare ourselves lead agency, notify-
Circulate is to all, all involved agencies. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? We will be declaring ourselves lead agency, and, um, in 30 days' time, we'll know where that comes. If, if no one objects, we probably will be on December's agenda.
December 8th?
I think that's the date in December.
I think that's the first date after the 30 days would-
Yes.
-elapse.
So, I hope that people become aware that the project is out there, um, and that it will most probably be discussed again at a meeting of the planning board in December.
Thank you.
Anything else that we can do for you tonight?
No, that's all you can do for me tonight. I appreciate everyone's attention and look forward to working with the board on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is to consider a site plan amendment to a previously approved project. Uh, the owner applicant is Proven KP LLC. The address is 3-5 Edgemont Road in Katona.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Stephen Helms with the Helms Group Architects, representing Jamie Provenzano, who could not be here tonight, uh, Proven KP LLC. This property is located at 3-5 Edgemont Road. Um, I have photos here of the existing and the propos- or the as-built building as it sits today. Um, this was a long project. About three years ago, we started this. We were before the zoning board. We were before your, your board several times. And, um, uh, it took about three years getting our permits and construction. It went a little longer than anticipated. The first and second floors of the building was needed, major structural repairs. It was a mixed-use building consisting of the Katona Publishing on the first and second floor and a two-bedroom apartment on the third floor. Um, we went and, uh, converted the first and second floor into apartments. We have two ADA apartments on the first floor with a handicap ramp, uh, for accessibility, and the second floor was created two apartments. We kept the third floor as a two-bedroom apartment, which it remains today. Um, we did present this with, uh, designating one of the apartments as affordable. Um, my client, quite frankly, would like to see if there's a way he can get out of that, having that designated. We had a TCO issued back in March. The building was finished February. The town gave a TCO. The only apartment that's not rented is the second floor. I believe it's apartment D. That was the one that was designated, and that expired October 14th. We did get that renewed prior to the expiration date. So, we have a valid TCO for another six months. Um, uh, and, uh, with the cost that he incurred and the time and so forth, he just would prefer not to have the restriction on this building. We did, there's some language in the code under the affordable creation of affordable units where five or more, we did add four. The one was always there. So, our interpretation, I reached out to the supervisor, subsequent to the town attorney, Eric Gordon, and, uh, you know, there is some language in the town code that, again, uh, 20% rule. Uh, so, we did create four, not five. Um, I just realized, or I guess, subsequent to all of this, I think there was 12 apartments that came online, the Affordable on Valley Road and Cottage Terrace, I believe, went to affordable. Um, so, that's, I'm just using that as an example. There has been quite a bit of apartments being developed, three more at 150, uh, Bedford Road or 156, I don't know the, the exact address. I'm working on a project now at 150 that we're going to create three. Um, but this is, uh, this building here, the owner, uh, these aren't, it's not a huge apartment, about 550 square feet, and he just, quite frankly, doesn't want the restriction on this project, on this property. And we, before your board, we were told or advised to come back to your board to see where, if we can have that waived in this application.
It seems very strange to, to go through an extended process, um, without ever mentioning a complete reinterpretationing, reinterpretation of the, the town code in this regard. Um, and then to, to come up with it at the very end seems, um, convenient.
Sorry?
It seems convenient to, to, to some extent, it feels a little bit like the client has used the promise of affordable housing to ease the, um, the, the approval process.
Well, we did-
And then at the end, when, when you have everything you want, you turn around and, and say, "We're going to reinterpret it."
The-
In a way that it's never been interpreted before.
Yeah. Five or more units, uh, town attorney, is there any validity to that?
Throughout the entire process, the assumption and the discussion in our notes throughout the entire process was that one of the units would be affordable.
Yeah.
Yeah. So- And the, the, you know, when we, when we do a two-lot subdivision, we call it a two-lot subdivision. We don't call it a one-lot subdivision with, uh, something else hanging out there. But there's always one lot when you start a two-lot subdivision. When you divide it in half, it becomes two lots. The, this was the, you know, I wa- I watched the, this building being built. This was an interior gut job on the building, and it was beautifully done. And, but-
Yeah.
In, in only the vaguest way possible could you say that that apartment that was there in the, is, is the same apartment that it was before.
Oh, it's renovated.
It's the same except it's got new electricity, new walls, new plumbing, and new everything.
Yeah. It's not a new building. It's an existing building. Um, it, uh, he feels he, you know, with the money he incurred, he sub- to have him subsidized, I mean, he-
You know, I, I appreciate that, that he, he feels he's had to pay for it. That's what every developer ends up having to do. Why, why is it harder for him to do that than for the, the developer with the three units further down on Bedford Road or, or you said in number 50, you're probably going to be three more units?
Yeah, that's a brand new, that's a brand new building, elevator, uh-
But you were nagging on a commitment. This was a firm commitment that you're trying to renege on. That, that, this discussion wasn't before.
Well, I, I presented the project. I presented it, and we were going with it. One of the units would be designated as a four.
I understand. And now, the attempt is to renege on that. It makes me very uncomfortable.
But, 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 I mean, that makes me uncomfortable, and even more so, it's the precedent it sets that to-
Well, Sarah-
We, we automatically are, it wa- it was, I believe, the intent of the town when it passed the law, and it was actually, I think this was part of the county housing law, to, um, require if, in cases where you have five or more units, one of them is going to be affordable.
Is there a fee and lieu mechanism that the town has built into their building code that allows him to pay a fee to compensate the board? I believe that's written in the town code.
The, the whole point of the new-
I, I don't know what's hap-
Only in single-
The, the whole point of the new town, town code, which was imposed by the county to some extent, uh, because of the federal lawsuit that was out there, was to do away with the fee and lieu.
Okay.
So, no, there isn't a fee.
So, that's not in your code anymore? That was strike-
Not for this, not for this type of development.
Not for this.
Only for residential, well, in a single residential.
If it was in single family, it would be, in single family, there is.
And, and they're very encouraged.
But even that, it came, yeah. And even there, it came, i- it came late to the party.
Is it not, so that's not a-
Like, just a hard and fast requirement? I'm, I, or is, are we, are we even empowered to?
I don't think so.
Requirement?
I don't think we'd have a legal right to do it, frankly. I think we could be sued. But I'm not an attorney, so I shouldn't say that.
I mean, if, if it's not actually the wording of the law and that it's not a requirement, I, I guess that's intriguing and we could explore that. But my understanding up until now had been that this was just a hard and fast requirement, and that's the end of the story.
And that was my, I would agree with that. That's what I had always assumed. A five-unit building is a five-unit building. It wasn't a five-unit building before. It is now.
I agree with that at the outset.
Yeah.
The approvals were given with the understanding that that would be the case.
Right. And, and the, the provision of the code that I think is applicable is, um, I'm just making sure here. So, under 125 dash, 125 dash 29.6, if you look at D 2A, right, it talks about AAF FH units in multifamily zoning districts. This is a multifamily zoning district. And it says, "At least 20% of these units in any multifamily residential development, in any multifamily residential zoning districts shall be established as AFH units," which is where we get, if you have five, you need one. So, the, the, the concept of the, um, within all residential developments of five or more units, that only real, that only applies in single-family zoning districts, which is what I thought I had advised the attorney who I was talking to or-
Yeah.
Um, so, our interpretation has always been, and my understanding is the 20%, is if you have five, one of them has to be affordable. That's 20%. And, and this board doesn't have the right to waive that, is our, is our, and, and in multifamily zones, you don't have a fee and lieu. Only in single-family zones is there a fee and lieu, um, provision. So, that's, that's where we had come out.
All right. So, I mean, I, I, what I'm gathering is, I understand your board, uh, he is, he can either appeal it or he makes the unit affordable, as he planned to, and then go with that.
That's where we are.
The messenger. I just, uh, you asked me to present to your board to see if he can get it exempt? And it sounds like your board's pretty stern, and it was presented that way, so-
Well, and, and we really, I, I think maybe we should have been clearer at the, the outset. Even if we wanted to, I don't think that we'd have the, the legal right to.
I don't see that here either.
Yeah, I, I don't think he meant to do it, or we promoted to get it all the approvals. I mean, this is a pretty straightforward project. It wa- we weren't, uh, asking for anything crazy on it, but, uh, it was presented with one, and, uh, I'll bring it to his attention.
I just want to refer you to the initial conditions because you're on, you're on your final TCO.
Right.
If you were beyond that, you'd have to go to the town board-
Right, and we-
To relieve. See, what you, what needs to happen next is the restrictive covenant needs to be duly executed and filed as the deed restriction, and then-
For the one unit.
For the one unit. And then, a member of the housing authority needs to come and set the rent.
Okay. Is that Blue Mountain, or is that, uh, what, uh-
It's Blue Mountain.
It's Blue Mountain slash Town Housing Council.
The boards, the boards are identical, but they are separate entities.
And we have a form of covenant that we, we, we've prepared for this situation. The marketing and the unit, we're still debating right now, so how, or how, how that gets, how it gets determined, who gets to rent it, is still being debated right now.
I throw a curveball at. Is there even an option if he was developing some other property in the town to add another one instead of-
Unfortunately, it says it has to be on the site of the multifamily development. If you were dealing with single-family, it would be different. But it's very strict with respect to multifamily developments.
No, I'm saying if he had a, a new project I'm working on, he's required by three. If he adds four, to compensate for this loss, that'd be-
Again, I, I think the answer is that it has to be within this development, the affordable.
Specifically.
It says, "These AAF units must be provided on the site of the proposed," oh, wait.
Or in an approved offsite location.
Or an approved offsite location. So, I guess you could get an amendment to allow it, an additional one somewhere else.
Is there a time limit on that?
If there was a viable location, if this board was willing to consider that. That's-
Is there a time limit on the affordable unit?
I think you're saying problem is this board considered the application with the affordable unit, and, and they, they made, they developed their approval based on that. It really needed to be done at the beginning of the process, not at the end of the process.
Yeah. And, and-
That's, I think, what I'm hearing. So, right.
Yeah, that's the key point. And part of the intent, just as a side piece, because that is the key point, is that the affordable units are supposed to be interspersed, not grouped, so that it doesn't change the tone of the housing. And, and so, that this one needs to be there and the others need to be elsewhere is consistent with what we're trying to do planning-wise.
Okay.
So, I think you're getting a sense from the board what their position is.
Yeah, I hear it loud and clear. Uh, my client asked me, I said, "I'm not a lawyer. I present it." Uh, and, uh, I, I don't know what to tell. So, Christine, will, um, I'd make chime in with you later this week to get some more specifics on that?
That would be great.
For documenting that?
Yep.
Okay. All righty. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thank you.
Anything else to come before the meeting? Close the meeting?
Second.
Aye. All opposed?